Coming Board of Commissioners meeting to order Tuesday, August 18th, 2020 at 10:00 a.m. And we please call roll.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Blazer.
Here.
Twilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Nosson.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Seven present, zero absent.
Yes, Commissioner Twilliger to lead us in the indication and the pledge, please.
Heavenly Father, we pray once again for your guidance and wisdom on this meeting today. We continue to pray for the families and flood victims for adequate support, and we are thankful for the dedication of our employees here at Midland County. And finally, we pray for school administrators, for teachers, and most of all, for our children to be, that they will be able to start the school year, and we pray for your protection, and we pray for a sense of peace in our communities and our state and our nation as we go into this election year. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes per August 4th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we approve the minutes.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. We will approve the minutes and move on to the acceptance of the bills.
Properly addressed General Bank claims for the weeks of 7/27 through 7/31, $293,750.85. The total general fund expenditures of $82,567.92. And General Bank claims for the week of 8/3 through 8/7, $759,961.35. The total general fund expenditures, $82,372.85.
Commissioner Nosson.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we pay the bills.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will pay the bills. We do have on our agenda Annie Rumel from the Great Lakes Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau was going to be here, but something came up and she could not make it. So right now, we'll move on to the presentation of the 2019 Annual Audit. Doug Dieter's here from Raymond. Thanks, Doug.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Another beautiful day out there. So I just want to run through the audit report if we all have it in front of you. This was a very interesting year, I can imagine, trying to do an audit through the everything that's going on. We did do the audit 100% remotely, so we didn't have anybody on site to do the audit work. And that's been Raymond's constant theme since middle of March, is we're all staying home, so try to protect everybody. So, given that circumstances, obviously, the audit's not as smoothly as it's gone every year. It's a little bumpier where we're working remotely, some of the county staff working remotely, and so on. So, we did get through it, and we did issue our report on time by the June 30 deadline. Even though the state did offer an extension to any municipalities that wanted or needed it to get their audit reports issued, but Midland County was able to get it done on time by the June 30 without applying for the extension. So, just run through, one note, the county submits their financial statements, their audit report to the Government Finance Officers Association every year, and they did so for 2018, and they got the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Bridgette, do you remember how many years that is now? 26 years, so.
Pretty good.
What the GFO does is they put the financial report through a rigorous review process. There's some additional requirements and that type of thing to be in the audit report, so it's quite an achievement for the county to get that for 26 years in a row.
Of oh.
And they submitted it again, I assume, this year, and you'll get noticed in the next few months probably, usually, actually, the GFOs are running behind, so it might take longer to get the certificate this year, but.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Have you ever worked on an audit where you didn't get one of those?
I have not, no. No, but not everybody submits it to them either. It's a voluntary thing.
Oh, okay.
And not all entities wish to do that. But I know they do reject some of them, but I've not come across one from our firm that they rejected.
Okay.
So it's not an easy process, by no means. I mean, it's quite a review process that it goes through. So we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level assurance independent auditors can provide, same opinion we've issued in previous years. Means the financial statement is fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. If you want to turn to page, I'm trying to figure out how to use this thing, 27 in the audit report. And this is going to look at your governmental funds, the balance sheets, all the assets, liabilities, and fund balance for governmental funds. And we'll look at the general fund to start with. You can see there, the first section is the total assets. Total assets for the general fund total just over $13 million at December 31st, 2019. Most of that is in the cash investment pool of $10.7 million. The others are little receivables from different places and different types of transactions. The liability section, the middle section there, total liabilities, $1,0886. This has encompassed of the accrued payroll that was worked but not paid before year-end, some trade vendor payments that were, the services were incurred before year-end and not paid till after year-end, that types of thing. And then you have deferred inflows of resources. So the county levies, property taxes, and if those taxes aren't collected within 60 days of year-end, they're considered what's called unavailable revenue, not available to pay the 2019 obligation. So they're considered a deferred inflow, and it'll be recognized as revenue in the next year. So that's kind of a liability, but a different type of liability, I guess, if you will. Then the fund balance, broken into different categories. Your non-spendable of $856,000, that's related to the long-term assets, so you have some long-term advances to other funds. You have some pre-pays and that type of thing that will not turn into cash soon enough after year-end to be usable. Then there's some assigned fund balance of $2.2 million, and the unassigned fund balance of $7.6 million. This is what's available to reallocate in the next fiscal year if necessary. Next, I'd like to go to page 31. This is going to show budget actual for the general fund, revenues, expenditures, and transfers. The first section there, revenues, total revenues were about, just over $1 million over budget, for a total brought down of $30,764,000. You can see there are a couple differences, the taxes. We look at last year, taxes came in about $500,000 higher than the previous year, about 3%. Henry governmental revenue is approximately $1 million, or 21% higher than the prior year, as you can see, over budget by $1 million as well. That's mostly due to the personal property taxes, the state replacement for that came in $1 million higher than last year or expected this year. The charges for services you can see are under budget by $733,000. This one here, this county implemented a new standard, GASB statement number 84, that looked at the agency funds and said, okay, we're going to eliminate agency funds, we're going to create a new fund type called custodial funds. And some of the funds that were presented as agency funds did not meet the criteria of a custodial fund, therefore had to be moved to a different fund. So what happened is there were certain court-related items that were handled in the agency fund in the previous year are now reported in the general fund. Those things are very hard to budget for, but that budget variance is basically related to that activity that was estimated and just didn't come in where it was estimated at. So, the new process, I would assume, will be refined over the years as, you know, you get more experience in what that activity is.
So, just, and this is my accounting naivete, so there's, it's over budget, so it's positive there. Is there some?
No, it's under budget.
It's under budget, but it's a positive variance?
No.
Okay. My question is, is there a corresponding reduction somewhere else?
In the budget or in the actual?
In the actual. So this is, what you just described was something that wasn't, is just an accounting artifact.
Right, right.
Okay, there's no net impact on our overall budget. So if it's a, if it's a under budget here, where is the corresponding?
Under budget and the expenses?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look, it's not the same because it's, but if you look at the judicial section in the expenditures.
Yeah.
It's under budget by $329,000, and that had to do with the same thing. So the whole $700,000 in the revenue isn't just due to GASB 84, that was the largest portion of it. So generally.
This is the restitution, right?
Yes, yes.
So, nice.
Yeah, okay.
So restitution used to be handled through entirely different funds. Now we have to budget for revenue of restitution and expensive restitution. They basically are awash on both sides. So whatever we budget, if we budget half a million dollars because we don't want to come, and, you know, we don't want to be over, we're going to budget the same amount in revenue as we do in expenses.
Okay.
It's, this is the Accountant Job Security Act.
So even in the actual column, the revenue matches the expenses, expenditures.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any other questions on that? Okay, if we look at the total expenditures, you can see there just about $26.6 million in total actual expenditures compared to budget of $27.2. So, from aggregated standpoint, expenditures were under budget by $588,000. A good part of that is related to what we just talked about, the new implementation of the standard.
Okay.
The next section, the transfers, so the general fund gets some transfers into this fund from other funds, and that was about $588,000. But mostly, the general fund brings in unrestricted funds such as property taxes, state revenue, and then they allocate it out to other funds to help support those. And the transfers out of the general fund were $4.7 million, which was what was budgeted for. So based on that, the final budget had a decrease in fund balance of $1.6 million expected, but after all the actual results are in, the general fund only saw about $38,000 reduction in fund balance.
Thank you.
A very positive year from that respect. Any questions on that? Next, I'd like to look at page 92. Page 92 is going to look at the Act 345 Retirement System, so your police retirement system. This gives you the historical information since 2014 to give you an idea of trends of what has happened. The first section is the total pension liability. This is calculated by the actuary that the county hires each year, and they base this calculation on a bunch of assumptions, trends, and that type of thing. You can see the total pension liability, the net change was an increase of $941,000. So not a big change when you're looking at $30 million liability, but it did go up about $900,000. The next section, Plan Fiduciary Net Position, this is going to be related to all the assets the county has set aside to fund that liability. As you can see there, the change in fiduciary net position increased almost $4 million in 2019. And the large part of that was the net investment income. So if you remember, 2018, and the stock market was a horrible year, you can see there, in the middle of that section, the net investment income or loss for 2018 was a loss of $800,000. That came back significantly in 2019, and 19 showed a gain of $4.6 million. So that's where you're seeing your largest change in the fiduciary net position. So the difference between the total pension liability, fiduciary net position, is what's called your net pension liability. So that's the unfunded portion of your plan, which is just over $2 million for an unfunded portion. Or you could look at that from a percentage, it's over 93% funded. So the plan is in pretty good shape at 93%.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Just that last row, net pension liability as a percentage of covered payroll.
Yeah.
Why is that important? Why do we?
Very good question, and I'll have a good answer for it. But that's a requirement from the GASB, and what they're looking at is, okay, the covered payroll are people that are still working that participate in the plan. So, as people retire, and especially in closed plans, that covered payroll goes down, so you have less people contributing to the plan. So what's, right, so that's what they're trying to get at, is, you know, how much is the pool you have to charge your retirement percentage on current employees? So you see there that your net pension liability is about 127%, because you've got a lot more people retired than you do working that are in the plan.
Is there a red flag number that you should be thinking about?
No, it's more important to look at the fiduciary net position as a percentage of the liability.
Yeah.
93%. And that's what the state's going to look at to see if the plan's in trouble or not. Obviously, you would not be considered in trouble from the state's standpoint, their percentages are quite a bit lower than that. But it does definitely, as you have less people working to contribute towards that actuarially determined contribution, percentages you have to charge on each person's payroll increases more and more.
Right.
From a budget perspective, that's an important thing to look at.
Thank you.
Administrator, Controller.
Yeah, I think it also gives you a good indicator of the cost of each plan. Like, they're different, right? So if you look at that cost as a percentage of covered payroll from Act 345 versus the employee's retirement versus retiree healthcare, you can see the cost as it relates to each one. So I think that, you know, as far as a metric of sort, I think it's useful information.
Got it.
I don't always say that about actuariales.
So next, we'll go on to page 96. This is going to show the same type of information for the employer retirement system. The first section, the total pension liability increased $1,152,000. It stands at just over $63 million. The Plan Fiduciary Net Position increased $6,183,000. Again, a large portion of that had to do with the change in the investment income at the end of 2019. And so, the fiduciary net position ended the year $59,498,000. The difference between the total liability and the fiduciary net position is your net pension liability of $3,684,000. So this plan is over 94% funded. So again, another good situation to be in from a funded perspective for the plan. And we'll look at the same thing for the retired healthcare, which is on page 100. This fell under a different standard, so there's only three years of historical information here compared to the, I think it was five in the previous slide. Same information presented, the total OPEB liability actually decreased here by $3,800,000. So the total OPEB liability ended the year with $63,593,000. The Plan Fiduciary Net Position, again, the funds set aside to fund that liability increased $4,400,000. Again, almost all that had to do with the change in the market from year to year. For a total plan, that position of $31,194,000, which leaves an unfunded, or the net OPEB liability of $32,300,000. So a rather large unfunded position, but the plan is still over 49% funded. And from a retiree healthcare perspective statewide, that is still a pretty good funding ratio. It exceeds the state's level that they started getting concerned with it and that type of thing. So it's just from a budget perspective, let's, you know, make sure we keep an eye on that funding it appropriately. But remember, these liabilities aren't, they're not due tomorrow, they're not due next year, they're due over everybody's lifetime, so it's a very long-term liability. As long as you're contributing the amount that the actuary suggests or something close to that, you know, you're going to have the funds there to make the payments to the retirees when necessary. Yes, sir.
Back on the OPEB liability, the changes in assumptions, $3 million in terms of changes in assumptions, do we know what that's due to?
Yep. Yeah, so in 2019, this is on page 101, it explains the last sentence there. So the plan adjusted the expected discount rate from 5.5% to 6.5%. So you're expecting to get another percent on your investments, therefore that changes your total liability significantly.
Got it.
Remember, these are all estimates, these assumptions, they're shot in the dark, they're dartboard, whatever you want to call them. They're based on some historical trends and that type of thing, but you really don't know what's going to happen, and that's where you have to kind of historically go back to look at what's happened and try to guess what's going to happen in the future to make sure those assumptions are in line with what's actually happening, as close as possible. Any other questions? The last item I want to touch on is going to be on page, starts on page 230. So as we've done in the past, we performed a single audit in conjunction with a financial statement audit. The single audit looks more at the compliance and how the county spent federal awards, federal grant awards. We did issue again here the same thing, an unmodified opinion on compliance, that we didn't find any compliance issues related to the single audit or the federal awards that were tested. If you look at, let's see, page 239, we did look at two different federal awards this year, almost to the bottom of that page. The Child Support Enforcement or Title IV D program, as well as the formula grants to rural areas, that's the amount that the county gets in, and most of it gets passed through to the county connection and transportation system. So those are two programs we looked at this year. We rotate those every year and look at different programs every year. That's all I wanted to cover. I'd be happy to answer any questions, any... Yes, sir.
Could you just describe the one material weakness?
Sure. So, as part of the audit process, we look at internal controls, we assess internal controls, and if we find an issue within the internal controls, you know, we're required to report that to you. So there was an adjustment to, within the drains component unit, that was not caught before the audit process. So because of that, it's called an audit adjustment, and it was a pretty, it was a significant number, therefore it was considered a breakdown in the internal control. Really, it was a breakdown, maybe communication between departments and that type of thing more than anything else. Again, I don't think, you can elaborate, Bridgette, I don't think there's any...
Was it timing issue?
It really was.
Okay.
It really was a timing issue. But it also didn't help that, you know, we were trying to finish closing, and then we closed, right, the building, so everyone was doing things remotely. And to that, you know, I really want to commend, although Doug already alluded to, you know, it was probably a rougher audit process than normal, really commend both teams, the Raymond team and our team internally. Our finance team did a great job stepping up to the plate and really making sure that questions were answered and information was provided in a timely manner, and so that we were not requesting an extension on our audit submission. And it did get turned in on a timely basis to the state of Michigan by June 30. So really want to say thank you to the finance group. And, you know, this is Mike's first year on this side of our audit, and he did a fantastic job leading the team, so.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Very much appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
It's good to get some good news.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to public comment on anything that is not on our agenda today. Is there any public comment on anything not on our agenda? Seeing none, Anne, will you start with Standing Committee Report Number One, please?
Dated August 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the agreement with Service Express for an extended warranty and technical support for IT equipment that is no longer under manufacturer warranty. The term of this agreement is 36 months, and adequate funding was included in the 2020 budget for this expense. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Nosson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A&amp;O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 82-8-20.
Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any commissioner discussion?
I'd like to just note that it was a savings of approximately $10,000.
Thank you, thank you. Anne, call roll, please.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Nosson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee Report Number Two, please.
Dated August 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the 2019 Comprehensive Financial Report prepared by Raymond. We recommend acceptance of the 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as submitted. We've also reviewed the 2019 Management Letter Findings and Recommendation, included departmental responses, and find the recommended corrective action to be appropriate. Therefore, the Finance Committee recommends approval of the proposed corrective action. Respectfully submitted, Scott Nosson, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian for Jeanette Snyder, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Nosson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 77-7-20.
Do we have any public comment on this? Any commissioner discussion? Anne, call roll, please.
Mr. Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Nosson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
To Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee Report Number Three, please.
Dated August 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to levy .30 mils of the Gypsy Moss Suppression Program millage for the upcoming year 2021. Respectfully submitted, Scott Nosson, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian for Jeanette Snyder, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Nosson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 81-8-20.
Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Anne, call roll, please.
Mr. Dorian.
Yes.
Nosson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
To Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee Report Number Four, please.
Dated August 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to levy .25 mils for the purpose of continuing, contributing to countywide public transportation services, exclusive of services provided by the city of Midland in 2021. Respectfully submitted, Scott Nosson, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian for Jeanette Snyder, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Nosson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 83-8-20.
Do we have any public comment on this? Commissioner discussion? Anne, call roll, please.
Mr. Nosson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee Report Number Five, please.
Dated August 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to levy .85 mils for the purpose of providing programs and services to seniors in Midland County in 2021. Respectfully submitted, Scott Nosson, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian for Jeanette Snyder, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Nosson.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 84-8-20.
Is there any public comment? Commissioner discussion? Anne, call roll, please.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
To Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Nosson.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion carries.
Okay, that's it for Standing Committee Reports. We have no RPCs. We have no old business. I believe we do have one item of new business. If I could get a motion to bring that up?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Would you bring up our item of new business, please, Anne?
Dated August 13th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the attached resolution supporting the Line 5 Tunnel. I further recommend that the county clerk send a copy of this resolution to Enbridge Community Engagement, if approved by the Board of Commissioners. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, District Number Five, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the adoption of Agenda Item 85-8-20.
Do we have any public comment on this? And please come forward, state your name, address, and I'd like to hear your public comment.
Annette Glenn, address 4519, James Drive, Midland. It's always a privilege to be here and see everybody. I'll be brief. Your State Representative in Lansing, I just want to take a moment to express my support for this resolution.
Ann, please come forward, state your name, address, and I'd like to hear your public comment.
Annette Glenn, address 4519, James Drive, Midland. It's always a privilege to be here and see everybody. I'll be brief. Your State Representative in Lansing, I just want to take a moment to express my support for this resolution. Our Great Lakes, without doubt, are one of our most precious natural resources, and I'm wholly committed to protecting them. Building the tunnel around Line 5 will ensure the protection of our waters while also ensuring we can safely transport through the line. Not only is the protection of our natural resources important, but if we discontinue the use of Line 5, we will be forced to use other means of transportation, such as trucks and rail cars, and further task our infrastructure, both, all of which create greater chances of a spill and loss of our natural resources. The construction of the tunnel around Line 5 is the best option to protect our waters, ensure our propane supply, and that Michiganders don't go without heat or are unable to afford the heat that they need. I want to be brief, so I will just conclude by saying I fully support your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Dorian?
Yes.
Knowson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion carries.
Okay, we are now going to move on to commissioner comments, and we're going to start with Commissioner Glazer.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Twilliger.
I'm just going to once again congratulate you, Mike, on hitting your first financial review in a very challenging time with our pandemic. And I know that that was challenging, and the whole department, I congratulate you, your department, and successful, and it's great to get some good news. Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler.
No comment.
Commissioner Dorian?
No comment.
Commissioner Knowson?
No comment.
Commissioner Snyder?
I completely agree with Gay, and thank you for saying that, and thank you, Mike. And I appreciate Annette being here and giving us that little bit of information. I understand we had a good presentation on Channel 5, and I agree with that completely. Thank you.
And we kind of skipped over it in the executive committee, but I'd just like to say that it was nice to see the amount of savings that Lee Township got on their bond savings. So that was something we skipped past, but really good to see them be proactive, refinance those bonds and save that kind of money. So that's a lot of money. That's all I have for that. We'll move on to commissioner meeting schedule and start with Commissioner Glazer.
So Commissioner Glazer, tomorrow, has a Zoom meeting with the Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Board at 4 o'clock. And then at 7 o'clock, we have, I have Homer Township. Next Tuesday at 5 o'clock, another Zoom meeting with Community Health of Central Michigan. And then on Thursday, Mid-Michigan Community Action. So all of these agencies have been meeting with Zoom, although Community Action and Claire or Farwell, Farwell is having, if you're there in that area and you want to be on site, you can attend. I think that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, I have Community Mental Health wraparound tomorrow. That will be a Zoom meeting, and I have Drug Court next Thursday, and that will be a Zoom meeting as well. And I believe all of you may have received a notification from Ingersoll Township with a public hearing, and it's hard, I believe, to discern what that is about, because I didn't know what it is about. My husband did, and I did contact a member that is on the board. And it is a tax abatement for the new equipment Freeland Bean and Grain is putting over on Shriver Road. So it's basically for tax purposes, and I do plan to attend that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler.
Jessica, can you help me? Pardon? Tuesday, the 25th, A and O.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian?
Human Services is scheduled to meet Monday, the 24th, at 2 o'clock in this room. That is all I have.
Commissioner Knowson?
Yeah, Finance Committee, 1:30 on the 25th. Health and Human Services meeting the next day, the 26th, at 9:30. These are Zoom meetings. On the 27th, there is a Water Asset Management Council Zoom meeting planned at 9:30. Quite frankly, we're trying to decide if that needs to exist anymore because of funding issues, so stay tuned. And then on the 31st, we have the Michigan Works Joint Board of Directors at 3:30. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
Thank you. Are we going up to the first?
Yeah.
Thanks. So tonight, I have a big Sanford Lake Association annual meeting. We usually have a couple hundred people. We're going to try to accomplish that via Zoom. And after eight years on that board, I am going to, this will be my last meeting, I decided not to rerun, but I'm going to stay in support as commissioner for that. At the Road Commission on the 19th, I have Four Lakes Board Meeting on the 19th, LIPC on the 20th. Also on the 20th, I have the Sanford Lake Improvement Board, public hearing to decide what to do with those weed lake improvement funds that are set aside, all the taxes. And then on the 25th, I have the City of Coleman. The 26th, I do have a meeting, 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, so that's very exciting. I'm going to be participating in that with Annette Glenn. And that is...
What was that amendment again?
Whatever, Scott.